This time I'll ask Commissioner Shackleford if you would have our prayer and impetus and pledge allegiance to the flag of our great nation.
Amen. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the many blessings you have given us. Heavenly Father, please give us strength when we are weak, love when we feel forsaken, courage when we are afraid, wisdom when we feel foolish, comfort when we are alone, hope when we feel rejected, and peace when we are in turmoil. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Our commissioners have proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there any need for any changes to the proposed agenda?
There are no changes. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Have a motion and a second. Need further discussion. If you are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so per seing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. You also have your consent agenda. Is there any need for any changes to the consent agenda?
There are no changes. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Need further discussion. If you are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so per seing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Public comments.
We had two, two signed up tonight, the first being Mr. Anthony Darden.
Mr. Darden.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
I just rise to speak on behalf of the American Police Post 536. So I got a petition that's eleven that we wanted to give you all, if you want to give to you, you know, put on your records. But what we trying to say, so in favor of the 2024 Members of American Police Post 536 met with Green County manager Kyle Behan for his request at the former Green County Health Department, former VFW business, to discuss the proposal for 536 to acquire the business. Mr. Behan greeted post members upon his arrival and initiated a conversation by explaining that the building was vacant and available for use once it had been renovated and met minimal county codes for use in the occupancy. The past surrounded price quote dated October 25, 2023, prepared by Gillert Construction Company Incorporated. The quote outlined the minimal repairs that must be made before our posts could rent and occupy the business. The cost of repair listed at the quote quoted $226,000. The price does not include interior renovations other than exterior walls. This meant total renovation could be much higher. Mr. Behan stated that the county was not interested in relinquishing the building once repairs were made because the building sits on prime property. He stated once renovation were completed and the building met county code, the county would establish guidelines for the post to rent the business. Post members immediately realized that what was being proposed for our posts to acquire the business was illogical. Several post members immediately turned and walked away in disbelief, expressing the meaning is nonsense and a waste of all time. No one in their right mind would agree to a proposal like this. Post 536 has a 501(c) and not, we don't operate some donation, but in order for us to do some prayers like that, we could use the 501(c) to get donation. Therefore, it is not in the post's best interest to accept your proposal. And this is from our manager, I mean, our American Police Post 536. Command, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Pass him out.
Yes, sir.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir. There's a second and it's a Jimmy Sutton.
I know y'all talking the same, me coming up here, but I'm talking about what's going on in Green County too, out there where I live at. And I'd be sitting home on Sunday, I can see Soss come by my house, but when I say something about one of the sherries over here live at, he don't like where I, why do I know where he live at? The large stuff that's going on that y'all don't know about because I'm over there and ain't bothering nobody. Truck's coming up there in my driveway, keep turning around and I know that he's right here. One doesn't want to go and then they just bring it back up there tonight. So somebody need to do something. I'm going to get me a turner. I already got a turner. The turner told me to come up here and let y'all know. If y'all can't do nothing, then he gonna step in and we'll do something. That's what I'm gonna let you know.
Where do you live?
248 Pritchett Road. Man out there was spraying my, spraying the field Saturday night and the wind was blowing and blowing stuff over there on my trucks and car. And I already got a paint jar showing y'all that the stuff eating up my paint jar. Two sherries come out there, but they won't do nothing with me and talking about, hey, this, I can't stop him spraying the land or, but he can, should stop there at the wind blowing, blowing over there on somebody else's mess on the vehicle and damaging the vehicle unless he want to pay for it. But that's why I came up here tonight for. And in the morning, it's a good Lord willing, I be leaving, I'm going to Greenville, cause he tell me come up here tonight and come up there tomorrow and he will send the sheriff eleven. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Do we have anyone else for public comments? Okay. Mr. Jamie Williams.
Good afternoon, or evening, actually. I, um, I'd first like to say, say thank you for having me up here. I greatly appreciate it. I am the volunteer director for the Chamber of Commerce and I am requesting to have the committee, um, how do I say, issue, submit names for a board, what we need as a vice president, a president, a treasurer, and a commissioner for the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. According to the bylines of the chamber, one member has to be chosen by the county commissioners. And then the personnel who submit their application, the county commissioners go ahead and say, these are the ones who qualify for, for to fill those positions.
Mr. Chairman, what it sounds like is the new Chamber of Commerce director is asking that you allow her to advertise for the positions available in the bylaws for the chamber and once they're received, we'll have you approve them like we do any others. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Sorry, we're a little nervous.
That's fine.
Sorry. I'm truly sorry. And that's pretty much all that I'm here for.
Okay. Thank you. We will, we will start the process.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. My first item for action for your attention today is Trillium Advisory Board appointment. If you recall, at one time we had appointed and then it was redacted or undone. More information was received. I believe the first regional advisory board meeting being next Tuesday, the 26th in Botha County. Two members need to be appointed to fill those positions. In speaking with Mr. Peterson of Trillium, he's waiting on Wilson County and Green County submission of those two members. I'll ask the board their wishes.
We've already approved Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Jones is the, he is on the
Governing Board.
Governing Board. And
The governing board.
The confusion was caused because our interpretation from speaking with Mr. Peterson was that another commissioner and a community member could be appointed. And after that was done, we were told that our interpretation was mistaken and that Mr. Jones would be on the governing board and the regional advisory board. And Commissioner Jones tried to make that correction at the last meeting. Now we're just trying to finish this full circle and make sure that there are appointings for this regional advisory board to represent Green County on the 26th.
Wayne Cat's already done theirs. Their governing board representative is also the only regional board, I'm sorry. I think the bylaws say a commissioner and one other.
I think the general statute, it is actually on the screen. It's 122(c) 118.1. It's a little bit lengthier than the summary.
Very much.
One county commissioner and then there is other, um, there are other details that the other member would fill. I can pull those up for you right here now. The individual with healthcare expertise, an individual with healthcare administration expertise, an individual with financial expertise, an individual with insurance expertise, an individual with social services expertise, an attorney with healthcare expertise, and a member who represents the general public who is not employed by or affiliated with Department of Health and Human Services as appointed by the Secretary of Kinsley. Those are the options that you all have.
Well, I think that the position should be filled for someone that the county commissioner presents, not treat. You know, they shouldn't be suggesting who they want to fill. It's just like it's their organization and it's supposed to be that person. So, uh, I think that we should find a person that's in the fit though qualifications that they want and that them serve for Green County. I mean, you need people have the best interest against Green County and not let them pick who they think they want to be there.
You should let Rob be one of these
Yeah.
Eleven.
Right. Be one of those eleven. So.
What's the wish of the board?
According to Dave Peterson, myself, for the commissioner.
Right.
That's right. He wants somebody with expertise and found the expertise in finance. So I don't know how long this is going, I don't know how long they serve. That's what, we don't have a handle on yet. It might be for a year, might be for several years. I don't know. We're going to have the regional meeting, it'll start till next Tuesday.
Tuesday, 26th, 46th.
Now, you know, Kyle have that experience, but it's no use of being involved in an organization and then you go, I mean, and it really shouldn't even be that way. You know, actually Kyle be a good person up there, but I don't think you really should have a county manager looking out for the welfare of the mental health stuff, the issues that we have. I mean, if you live here, these aren't different. But that's a big, big role to play in dealing with the crisis that we have in mental health. And you need somebody there that is going to speak and advocate for your county and your people. And that's my take on it. I don't mind Kyle, Kyle Bennett or any other what they suggesting there, but I'm not here saying that just because what Trillium want to go for that. I don't, you know, and that's my take. And Trillium been out there, you know all about a lot of stuff that have been going on for the years and we don't need that. I think more say me, the governing, the governing board has got a set of bylaws and the regional board have got their own set of bylaws. Until we go to this meeting and see what these bylaws are, some of them will have to be tweaked, I think, because I don't agree with everything they got. So, but the meeting, like I said, we won't, we won't know till next Tuesday when we meet. And then too, see, the thing about it is there's so much I don't, don't nobody know. Well, that's true. That's what we're trying to find.
I think that's why we make confusion.
Right. But at the same time, somebody from Trillium need to come here and, and talk so we can see who some of these people are, you know, so, so you can make a decision. We don't know nothing. They have been to the social service department and talked. And they talked one day when I was there in Kyle and threw us at it.
Two representatives from East Point.
Yeah.
A nice young lady who used
She's still with it, East Point, yeah.
She used to be our representative, but she was moved to Lenora and Sampson County.
Right, yeah.
And then, uh, you know, there was two individuals, two representatives there.
They have been to the county, but they hadn't been to a commission meeting. That's one thing I would request. Well, they need to come to, I think they need to come to a, a commission of a meeting because, you know, this mental health stuff, I mean, it been out there for a long time and it should be getting better and, and nobody can prove that it's getting better. And, you know, with this merger and the way things going, you know, if you don't have enough peoples, I mean, what about your providers? How they fit in, in, in this, this merger? You know, they're, they're the one that gonna be affected a lot because they got to go with all these rules and regulations that she gonna put out there for them. And when you have look like all the, the trend is going to be cooperation, uh, taking care of these mental health, health people, we gonna get shortchanged. We gonna get shortchanged because of the fact that who they might have taking care of your people and see these small providers, they do good job on working with, with people. And there is data out there to show you that, how your small organization, when these big companies, when they get up, all they looking at is profit and their shareholders. And you have a lot of people going out of business and after a while, you ain't gonna have nothing but good big cooperation out there. And then you gonna get shortchanged. Who's your next mate?
The regional board.
Up in the point of county commissioner member tonight and hold off on the union member, temporary member. Everybody had a representative. You're going to pick the county commissioner tonight and hold off on the other member till you can figure out what's going on.
So the county commissioner is Jer, is Commissioner Jones.
Is there any way Commissioner Jones will go to the next meeting, find out, represent us for the next meeting for the 26th? See, well, I will go represent us. I will care Kyle with me. We just leave his name on. We kind of figure out what's going on. Is that all right, James? Yeah. I mean, we need to, look, we getting engaged in something that when it's done, it's done. And you can't, not gonna be able to do it in a long time. And this mental health issue is, nobody be a crisis out here. It is. For, as people Trying to merge the tail of plan because July 1, I don't think it's gonna be ready to say it. It might be. And, uh, All right, let's do that till you get through and revisit this.
Isn't Trillium gonna be like forty-six counties?
Forty-six counties.
That's half the state.
So Trillium and East Point, how many in all?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Forty-six counties.
Okay. There's five regions.
So if I'm not mistaken, it was Sandhills, East Point, and Trillium. The three are now one.
Right.
And there are five regions and what is the new Trillium? I don't have that information. The Green County was for some reason put in the north central.
Why does Trillium center be this, the spotlight of all of them?
Trillium is the managing
They were surviving, surviving entity.
Yes. So they are the ones who are kind of dictating what they need us to do. And what they're asking for us here is a general statute and they want a board created and filled according to that general statute.
And see, you can only, you can only add get the Secretary of Health the okay to have twenty-two governing board members from everywhere for the big board. They've already had one of those meetings in February, January. I know I got the COVID right after that, so I can't say it's been two or three weeks. Well, I just think we need to educate more on this issue. Whoever who we get, I want to be very sincere about mental health. I don't, I don't care who we pick or what. Finances is very important for this, for this organization. You talking about billions of dollars, almost four billion dollars that this outfit is gonna get through. And then, then you got the different, you know, ethnic groups of people who represent these people. Right. You know, that's a, that's a big, that's a portion too. Who, who represents these folks? And you, you only got, you know, two people from a county and, and somebody not gonna be getting looked at sometimes. Well, I, I had agree with you that too, so I'm not gonna fall through the crack. That's what's worrying me right now. So people need to know what's, somebody what's going on.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that Green County is represented at that table. So whatever you guys feel is best.
I'm good with that.
Perfect.
Make that a formal motion.
You gonna make that in the form of a motion?
As well.
Make a motion.
You gonna make a motion, right?
So move Jerry John, Commissioner Jones be appointed and Kyle go with him at the next meeting. Second.
Have a motion and have a second. Need further discussion. If you are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so per seing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. There is some sort of foggy grounds here, but we'll do the best we can.
We gonna get it straightened.
I think it's appropriate if we come back with a maybe explanation or a maybe a follow-up after the meeting on Tuesday.
Yes.
We'll try to have somebody here at the next meeting for Trillium. We work that out.
Okay. Funton. Mr. County Manager F2.
Say again, sir?
Mr. County Manager F2?
Yes. My second for action is a proposed fee schedule amendment. Medicare is raising their rates and that is affecting three of our EMS billing codes. You'll notice those codes on the back of the informational. Colleton, who is our third-party billing company, is recommending we raise those same three billing services at a corresponding rate in an attempt not to leave money on the table. So, um, basically the three that are mentioned are the, are listed there. Are there questions about that? And are there questions about the proposed fee increase?
I really don't have any questions about it except the from date and through date.
Oh.
From 1/1/1900 to 12/31/2999.
So in computers, that's probably the beginning of time and the end of time. Is that about right, Trey?
I don't think we're gonna, I don't think any of us is old enough to be here from the beginning and will ever see the end.
This has come up before and I remember. But anyways, um, like I said, this is an, an attempt for us not to leave monies on the table or
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
I don't like, you know, we had an email this week. When they send this, when they send the bill out, do they send it out before insurance is approved or how does that work now?
Well, that's going to depend. It's my understanding that if the paramedics are doing your chart and they ask you for insurance, if you're unable to respond or you do not respond, then they send the entire bill to be, to the billing company, they say not responsive, and then the billing company bills you, the individual, for the entire amount. And then the individual is supposed to, oh, hey, I, I've got insurance. And then they provide that information and they'll send a revised bill.
Okay.
It's a, it's the process.
Gotcha.
Just the way the process has been?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You've heard the request.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve in a second. Need further discussion.
I got some, I understand that we're uncovering rationale behind recommending increasing EMS fees, just the insurance, I must suppose, just move. Our current rate already positioned us above the level, raise the fees with Andrew Lee Burden, our const, emergency medical service to a central public quarter, not a corporate driven economy. Based on the information that we have been given before the meeting, we did not have full insight into true cost of providing the CMS services and what a reasonable rate adjustment should be. Before accepting third parties, building companies recommending a rate increase, we should conduct a thorough examination, determine fair and reasonable rates, the cover operating cost by maintaining and affordable access for our community. Voting to simply rubber stamp the building companies' proposal without this due diligence could be an unimportant decision. Additionally, in addition to resident Green County, I recommend by high leverage and medical debt, despite we need a nationwide disturbance, despite EMS fees, high care for animals, risk escalating this medical debt cost for most of our private population.
Be hard words, eh?
Yeah. Okay. This whole, this whole thing is off tonight. Kyle tried to clear microphone and just messed up my ear.
Okay.
Is he ever can have the same, same thing?
Those who use Colleton as a third-party billing company have all been recommended the same rate increase because Medicare increased their rates on these three services that are included in our billing, uh, rate sheet.
All right, well, Medicare, millions, if county don't get that, it's a great situation.
So generally how this works, and these are all great questions that I've got, so how this generally works is when we bill for a service, Medicare doesn't pay the whole service. They'll pay a percentage of it. So we raise our rates slightly above what Medicare charges so that when they reduce what we have charged, it will be at the rate they allowed to charge. So it's all in an attempt that we don't leave money on the table. That's, I know I've said that three times now and it's, it is the true and accurate statement. We're just trying to make sure we recoup all costs for Green County in this process.
But we don't impugn it towards the individual who's had the service. They don't have to pay more than they would have.
Let me see.
It's my question.
Yeah, it's a great question.
It would appear to me that the only circumstance that would happen would be is if they were uninsured without Medicare.
Okay, but I'm talking about Medicare stuff.
That's right.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Need further discussion. If you are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so per seing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Opposed.
Motion is carried forward from one, one in opposition.
Thank you.
Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify, so per saying, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Ours.
Motion's carried, four to one, one in opposition.
Thank you. Um, our next item for action is a sole source purchase request. If you recall, recently, the county commissioner meeting, you all approved a budget amendment for our ETSF, that's our emergency telephone system, but to replace the recording system. We use Carolina Recording Systems, I believe out of Wilson. And as we approached them with this, uh, with a want to, to change the recording system, they said that they could, uh, replace the system that we had that had reached, uh, the end of its useful life. Um, and that they were the only manufacturer that could replace it all accurately, and that they would provide us with a certification verifying this. Um, so, according to our purchasing policy, and general statute one forty-three, one twenty-nine eighty-six, um, a sole source purchase requires the approval of the county commissioners. So I'm bringing that to you. So to, to buy this without receiving bids, because they are certifying they're the only ones that can do this, you have to approve it. It does not go through our general bidding process. And remember, we're just trying to meet the change-out of our recording system for our nine-one-one setup.
Not costing any extra money?
No. I believe the budget amendment was for seventy thousand, and I think the recording system, I included the quote, was just over seventy thousand, seventy thousand four ninety-five, which can be picked up from another line item with some excess out of fund sixteen.
Move to approve this.
I'll say.
Okay, have a motion in a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify, so per saying, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The I S have it, the motion's carried, we're gonna take about a three-minute break. They are four, Mr. County Manager.
Yes, sir, thank you. Last item for action this evening is a resolution in support of a proposed relocation of the Green County Senior Center. Um, an opportunity to receive some community funding is available competitively. And we're trying to create and make the strongest grant application possible. And a resolution supporting this and this relocation would help in this process. Um, we reviewed it at the planning, visioning session we had the other day. And it is in front of you again. This will be attached to the application that will be submitted by Friday, the twenty-second. Are there questions?
I don't have a question, I do have a comment.
Yes.
Now, this is a vision that we have.
Yes.
We're not making a statement that we are moving the senior citizens center, but we're in the process of trying to gain funding to help with that process. If we don't get the funding to help with that process, it isn't gonna happen short-term, uh, most likely.
I don't think anything about this is short-term, these are both, uh, this is a timely process, it's a hurry-up thing.
We're planning for the future.
And we want to make sure that we are taking care of our seniors, and they're in the, in the, the big picture. And if this can be an opportunity that works, I think that we should try to take advantage of the opportunity.
If it works, we should take advantage of it. If it doesn't, we will still maintain the facility we have today, we have a center of excellence.
Yes.
And we will continue to maintain, I'm sure, that center of excellence. You know, David Rosado's back?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so, you know, we're in a winning situation. If we happen to get the funding, great. If we don't happen to get the funding, we'll stay right where we are and continue business as we're doing today, and everything's good.
I like your perspectives.
Just my perspective.
I want to point out something, Ms. Harrison, I emailed this morning about two grants, hope she looks into them. It won't come to the whole thing, but it's every penny counts, man.
That's right.
The chair moved to approve this resolution.
Have a motion and a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify, so per saying, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the I S have it, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Madam County Attorney, do you have any comments for tonight?
No comments.
Okay. Um, I would like to just go over a couple or three little things, um. It said so many times that government is slow, and government is slow a lot of times, it's, it's a process. But I'm really pleased that, uh, on February the nineteenth, the county manager brought us an agreement opportunity with Friendship Clothing Collections for collecting clothes, shoes, and books at our convenience sites. And we, as a board, voted unanimously to, to move forward with that. And the, uh, collection site receptacles, the bins are already in place. So that's one time that, uh, government didn't really move that slowly, it's already in place. And, and we thank you for bringing that to the board for our consideration.
Yes, sir.
And they are for clothes and shoes only.
Clothes and shoes only, okay.
The, the, for step.
They're at the convenience sites, at the convenience, all six convenience sites.
And the landfill.
Pardon?
And the land.
And the landfill, okay. Great. Uh, would also like to, um, make a comment, uh, this is, uh, something going on in the community. Uh, Free Union Church is gonna have their annual barbecue on April the thirteenth. We've talked about other, uh, the American Legion and other, um, uh, Olmansville Church and different ones that's having. And of course, Jerusalem Church is gonna have theirs Friday night, I believe it is, March the twenty-second, I believe. So, and also, we talked about, uh, Shine Fire Department having their reverse drawing.
April sixth.
April the sixth, and we talked about Cutter Creek, April the fifth. For the, uh, for the kids to go to Cooperstown, New York. A lot of stuff going on in this little county that's a great thing.
You said Pancake Supper, Jerusalem's March twenty-second.
Twenty-second, I believe.
Friday.
Friday, is that right? Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Um.
And you got the President's reception at A L C C?
Yes, I forgot that date. I'm not gonna say the date because I'm not sure.
Twenty-first, sound, twenty-first sounds right.
I'm not sure.
Gotta look at the caller and walk right back.
I, I think you might be right, I think it's Thursday.
It starts at six, I think, I didn't see that. Six o'clock, twenty-first.
All research and sending.
Yeah, we sent an email out, Kyle.
And the only other thing I'll say is March Madness is here, and we're gonna start playing some basketball at the national level Thursday, I think.
Thank y'all for your prayers, Sarah and I, I appreciate it, I knew all y'all were trying to help me out, basically, but.
We did.
I'll take it.
Some of us did.
You know, my, uh, county attorney, I think we had, okay, with Kelly's, we need to hurry up, Kyle, we just got a basketball game, good watch.
Any other commissioner comments or recommendations?
I got some.
Okay.
The county attorney's statement on the March fourth meeting, that the commissioner cannot have known about lawsuit we're making a motion in this closing session poses trouble question about county courts. It's true, we need to examine why such a uninformed motion would be made to begin with. As a light official, have a duty to the public before they're aware of the purposes and reasons for our extreme decisions that impact them. Making ambitious motion brings distrust suspicion. Furthermore, I believe that the lawsuit commences upon its filing, irrespective of when the commissioner become aware of it. The failure to properly identify the parties during the second closing session when the county attorney informed us that the case would then transport to federal court is troubling. Regarding the closing session that followed attorney public comments, I disagree with any closing session or matters that were addressed openly. The commissioners had questions about the attorney's public statement, that conversation should have remained in the public. Allow discussion on public matters to move behind going through the undertempts to transfer and early public trust. Also has concerns about how certain reports and documents were filed in commission or instant account audit. Copies were distributed days after the presentation had already occurred. Receiving important documents after the fact hinders our ability to thoroughly review materials and formulate questions beforehand. Distribute report in this manner reduces commission to passive audit numbers, whether the active participants able to engage, structure, and answer and dialogue expected by our council. I want to thank Director Cronin for the fast service delivery assistance announced that requests a more detailed presentation addressing the issues and concern raised, particularly around the communication and improvement. Whether to summarize, we need Director Cronin to outline specific problems or concrete actions being taken to resolve them. Additionally, Commissioner Johnson asked about earlier, our concerns about EMS billing process utilizing a third-party company. At upcoming meeting, I want to like a comprehensive overview of the details of how patient information and service details transmitted can initiate invoices, how quality control measures are, are in place to prevent errors and losses for identifying and correcting errors.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments or recommendations?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion to adjourn, have a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify, so per saying, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the I S have it, motion's carried.